All right, folks, we're gonna go ahead and get started here in a moment. If you haven't already found a seat, please take a moment to do so. Wow, everybody, that was nice. All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Adam Parkhouse. Thank you, Director of Stakeholder Services for NDOT's Northwest District. I want to thank you for taking time out of your schedule to be here tonight. You came here anticipating to be here for a public hearing for a proposed intersection, interchange improvement project at 10 and 65. Congratulations, you're in the right spot. Good job, we all made it. So, a little bit about how tonight's gonna go, a little bit of housekeeping. I think everybody saw how you get in and get out. In case there's an emergency, there are exit doors over there, there, and there. Bathroom's out there where you walked in. You haven't already found those. Hopefully, you saw our sign-in sheet when you came in and you took an opportunity to do that. That's, that's an important piece. It'll get you on the list to receive updates about the project as we move along here. So, um, so in a moment here, I'm gonna stop yapping and we're gonna play a recorded presentation for you. After that, we will then go into public comments. So, at the front, you had an opportunity to sign in if you wanted to speak tonight. If you didn't sign that sheet and you still want to speak, no worries, we'll give you, we'll give you an opportunity. We'll just go through the, the sign-in sheet first. I would do want to recognize a few people around the room before we get started. Again, I'm Adam with NDOT. Also with NDOT in the back, we have Matt Deitzley, he's our Deputy Commissioner. Cassie Bejek is our Public Relations Director and Derek Woolford is our Project Manager. And then, there's too many people from our friends at American Structure Point to name them all, but if you can just raise your hands and wave, that would be great. So they're our consultant on this project. They've done an amazing job getting us to this point and then also putting together this evening's festivities. Also, I know we have a handful of elected officials here tonight. Representative Michael Alesworth is here. Thank you for being here. Senator Rick Niemeyer, where are you? Over there, good. Sheriff Williamson, Pat Williamson, over there. In addition to that, are there any other elected officials that are here tonight? Would like to be recognized? Great, okay. So, without, without further ado, we're gonna go ahead and get started. The presentation runs about fifteen minutes or so. And then afterward, like I said, it'll come up. We'll get the public comment section going and we'll have a few more instructions about that at that time. So, uh, so yeah, we'll play the presentation. Welcome to the public hearing for the State Road 10 and I-65 Interchange Improvement Project in Jasper County, Indiana. My name's Adam Parkhouse and I'm the Director of Stakeholder Services for NDOT's Northwest District. Let me take a moment to introduce the rest of the project team. With the Indiana Department of Transportation, we have Cassie Bejek, Amy Stanley, Derek Woolford, and myself. And with our design team, American Structure Point, we have Gina Sessions, Bree Hope, and Preeti Samra. For those of you watching the presentation at the in-person hearing or online via the live streaming link, we will have this short video presentation. Then, there will be a verbal comment session after for public record. If you are attending the hearing utilizing the live streaming link, comments will only be accepted in electronic form, not verbally. After the verbal comment session, the public hearing will be concluded. However, the project team will be available for informal conversations at the information stations. You can also submit comments via the project website, mail, or email. If you are visiting the project website, you will be able to watch the same video, review the same exhibits and graphics, and find the same handouts. A printable comment form is also available within the information packet posted on the project website. NDOT requests that all comments be submitted by the date listed on the screen. I'll pass this off to Bree to tell you more about tonight's hearing.
Hi, I'm Bree Hope and I am the Environmental Project Manager for this project. We'll begin by discussing the purpose of the public hearing. From there, we'll move into the project details, including the location, purpose and need, alternatives considered, and a description of the proposed improvements, along with the planned maintenance of traffic. Finally, we'll cover the environmental review process, which is required due to the use of federal funding, and wrap up with the anticipated project schedule and next steps. This hearing is a required part of the environmental review process. The intent is to provide you, the community, an opportunity to learn more about the project, understand why it's needed, and see how it could benefit your community. It's also a chance for us to hear from you so we can gather information and receive feedback on the project. Whether you're attending the in-person hearing or providing feedback through the project website, your input is important. All comments received will become part of the official public record and will be carefully reviewed and considered as part of the project's decision-making process. You may be curious about the public hearing process and how today's event was announced. For this project, a public notice was advertised in the local newspaper. In addition, notices were mailed to local businesses, nearby residences, known property owners, and government officials. Postings about the hearing were also released on the project website, which is noted on this slide. If you're attending in person and didn't receive a notification, please be sure to sign in at the information table. If you're visiting the project website, we encourage you to email the contact listed on the website to be added to the mailing list. This will ensure you receive any future updates about the project. You may also be wondering where to find more information. There are several project resource locations available. A copy of this presentation, the environmental document, exhibits and handouts from this hearing can be found at the project website. A physical copy of the environmental document can be found at the information station here at the hearing, at the in-person locations listed on the slide, or can be mailed to you upon request. Let's begin with the project location. As shown here, the project is located at the interchange of State Road 10 and I-65 in Jasper County, Indiana. More specifically, the project extends along State Road 10 approximately .25 mile west and .2 mile east of I-65. The limits also extend approximately .05 mile north and south along the northbound and southbound ramp junctions. The need for the project is evidenced by the number of existing conflict points at the State Road 10 and I-65 interchange. Conflict points are potential areas where the passive motorists merge, cross, or otherwise come in close proximity to one another. The existing southbound and northbound I-65 ramp junctions at the State Road 10 interchange have a combined total of 25 conflict points. Crash data from 2021 to 2023 was reviewed for the interchange of State Road 10 and I-65, specifically at the northbound and southbound ramp junctions. During this period, a total of 52 crashes were reported. These included rear-end crashes, right angle or left turn crashes, and side swipe crashes. Of the 52 crashes, 43 resulted in property damage and nine resulted in injury. The number of crashes can be attributed to the amount of conflict points present at the existing intersection, along with traffic congestion during peak hours. Of the 52 reported crashes, 40 or approximately 77% are a result of rear end and right angle or left turn crashes at these conflict points. The need is also evidenced by the projected 2046 design year level of service, or LOS, of F meaning unacceptable at both the northbound and southbound I-65 ramp junctions. Level of service is a scale from A through F which classifies the operating conditions of roads. In general, the operating conditions of intersections are considered to be acceptable if found to operate at a level of service D or better. The purpose of the project is to reduce the number of conflict points at the State Road 10 and I-65 interchange, as well as to improve the operating conditions at both the southbound and northbound ramp junctions by increasing the design year level of service to a D or better. Now, I'll hand it over to Gina, who will walk us through the alternatives that were considered for the project and the maintenance of traffic plan.
Hi, I'm Gina Sessions, Roadway Design Project Manager for American Structure Point. Five alternatives were considered for this project. The first alternative considered was the no-build alternative. Under this alternative, no improvements would be made. While this alternative would eliminate immediate cost and environmental impacts, both ramp junctions at the interchange would likely have a level of service, or LOS, of five by the projected design year of 2046, and the number of existing conflict points would remain at 25. Alternate three would convert the existing one-way stop-controlled ramp junctions to signalize intersections while maintaining the diamond interchange configuration. This alternative would include the addition of left turn lanes along State Road 10 at both intersections, which would require the existing State Road 10 bridge over I-65 to be widened. While this alternative would meet the purpose and need for the project by reducing the number of conflict points from 25 to 12 and increasing the projected 2046 design year level of service to D or better at both the southbound and northbound ramp junctions, it was determined this alternative is not as effective at reducing the number of conflict points relative to the preferred alternative. Additionally, this alternative was determined to have a higher environmental impact and increased costs than the preferred alternative. Alternate four would convert the existing one-way stop-controlled ramp junctions to single lane roundabouts while maintaining the diamond interchange configuration. In addition, alternate four would reconfigure the West Drive access at the Loves Travel Center of American Truck Stop to right in and right out only while installing a traffic signal at the East Drive. While this alternative would meet the purpose and need for the project by reducing the number of conflict points from 25 to eight and increasing the projected 2046 design year level of service to D or better at both the southbound and northbound ramp junctions, it was determined to have a higher environmental impact and increased costs than the preferred alternative due to the need for additional right-of-way outside the limits of the interchange. Alternate five would convert the existing one-way stop-control ramp junction to single lane roundabouts while maintaining the diamond interchange configuration. In addition, alternate five would reconfigure the West Drive access at the Loves Travel Center of American Truck Stop to right in and right out only while installing a single lane roundabout at the East Drive. While this alternative would meet the purpose and need for the project by reducing the number of conflict points from 25 to eight and increasing the projected 2026 design year to level service D or better at both the southbound and northbound ramp junctions, it was determined to have higher environmental impacts and increased cost than the preferred alternative due to the need for additional right-of-way. Now, let's talk about the details of the preferred alternative, alternate two. The preferred alternative will convert each of the two existing ramp junctions at the interchange of State Road 10 and I-65 to single lane roundabouts. The typical section of the roundabout approaches along State Road 10 will consist of two 12-foot wide travel lanes separated by a two-to-12-foot wide raised median. The typical section of each I-65 on and off ramp junction will consist of one 16-foot wide travel lane. The typical section of the roundabout will consist of an 18-foot wide and single-lane circulatory roadway with curb and gutter, a 92-foot wide center island, and a 16-foot wide truck apron. The project will occur within the existing right-of-way. No permanent or temporary right-of-way will be required for this project and no relocations are required. The preferred alternative satisfies the purpose and need of the project by reducing the number of conflict points from 25 to eight at the State Road 10 and I-65 interchange, as well as improving the operating conditions at both the southbound and northbound ramp junctions by increasing the projected 2046 design year level of service to D or better. The maintenance of traffic plan will include a full closure of State Road 10 between the southbound and northbound ramp junctions with designated detours in place. The southbound and northbound on and off ramps will remain open during construction to maintain access to and from I-65. However, State Road 10 over I-65 will be closed for the duration of construction and through traffic on State Road 10 will be detoured. In order to cross I-65 along State Road 10, traffic traveling north on I-65 or westbound on State Road 10 will be detoured along I-65 northbound for approximately 11 miles to cross at the State Road 2 over I-65 interchange, then directed south along I-65 back to State Road 10. The northbound detour will be a total of 22 miles with an additional travel time of approximately 30 minutes. Traffic traveling south on I-65 or east on State Road 10 will be detoured on I-65 southbound for approximately 10 miles to cross at State Road 14 over I-65 interchange, then directed north along I-65 back to State Road 10. The southbound detour will be a total of 20 miles with an additional travel time of approximately 25 minutes. Emergency vehicle access to I-65 will be maintained by completing a U-turn at the median break on either side of I-65. The maintenance of traffic is scheduled to be in place for approximately nine months. Access to all properties will be maintained during construction. Project stakeholders, including local, school corporations, and emergency services, will be notified of potential closures and/or detours prior to construction. At this point, I'll turn it over to Preeti to discuss the environmental process, the impacts, and community involvement.
Hi, my name is Preeti Samer and I'm the Senior Environmental Specialist for the project. You might be wondering what the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, is and how it relates to this project. Whenever federal funding is involved, projects like this must comply with NEPA requirements. NEPA requires that we evaluate how the proposed project could impact the surrounding environment, evaluating both the natural environment, like waterways, wetlands, and endangered species, and the social environment, like historic resources and social and economic factors. These evaluations then go into the environmental document that is prepared for the project. For this project, this type of environmental document is called a categorical exclusion level one, or CE1. The CE is prepared in accordance with state and federal guidelines. The environmental process evaluates a number of possible alternatives, like the various intersection reconstruction options and the do-nothing alternative that was discussed earlier. The overall goal of the environmental process is to avoid impacts if possible, minimize any impacts that can't be avoided, and mitigate for any remaining impacts. The CE evaluated a wide variety of impacts, including things like trystal habitat, waterway impacts, and more. Coordination was also completed with local, state, and federal agencies that may have jurisdiction or special expertise. Just a reminder, as mentioned earlier, the CE document is available for review online at the project website and in person at the location listed on the screen. A waters and wetland delineation report was completed for the project. One wetland, Wetland A, was delineated. No permanent or temporary impacts to Wetland A are anticipated, and therefore, no water quality permits are anticipated. Approximately 3.97 acres of trystal habitat consisting of maintained grass will be impacted. No tree clearing will be required for the project. Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act requires that all above-ground structures 50 years old or older will be evaluated for eligibility for the National Register of Historic Places. It also requires below-ground or archaeological investigations to look for things that people have made, used, or left behind. However, the scope of this project was considered minor and exempt from full 106 review under the Minor Project Programmatic Agreement. It was determined to fall under Category A Type 2, which covers all work within interchanges and within medians of divided highways in previously disturbed soils. And now, let's talk about community involvement, which is where we currently are in the environmental process holding this public hearing. This important step lets you know why the project is needed, how it functions, and how beneficial it is, but it's also about gathering input directly from you. This is your community, and we understand the importance of this project fitting into your community. Because of this, we want to gather your input in the form of comments through this hearing. We encourage you to submit your comments to the project team. On the project website, a printable comment form is available. Additionally, you can send any comments to the listed email address or mailed hard copies to the address noted at the top of the form. If you are attending the hearing in person, verbal comments will be accepted after this presentation and a comment form is available in the project information packet for written comments. These comments will be reviewed and incorporated into the decision-making process. We do ask that comments be submitted by the date listed on the screen. Once again, your comments are important to NDOT, the project team, and the developmental process. This is your community and we value your input. Be sure to submit your comments through one of the official methods. All comments are part of the official record and will be given full consideration during the decision-making process. Our next steps after this hearing is to review the public comments and address them. Then, the environmental document will be finalized and approved and the project design completed. With that, I'll turn it back over to Adam to go over the anticipated project schedule and wrap up today's presentation.
Here, you can see the anticipated project schedule. The draft environmental document was released for public involvement in May of 2025, and now, a public hearing is being held. The environmental document will be finalized after consideration of the comments received within the comment period after the public hearing. Final design will then take place and the project is anticipated to be let in summer of 2026 for contractors to bid on construction. Construction is anticipated to start in late summer 2026. The estimated cost for the project is approximately $6.9 million, which includes design and construction. The project uses both federal and state funding. If you are attending the in-person hearing or via the live streaming link, the verbal comment session will follow shortly after this presentation ends. Again, please feel free to view the project information and exhibits posted to the project website. For in-person hearing attendees, there will be time after the verbal comment session is closed to view the project exhibits and have informal discussions with the project team at the information stations. Thank you again for being part of the public involvement process and participating in this opportunity. We appreciate your feedback. Okay, so with that, in a moment here, we will start the public comment period. Again, I have a sheet here where many of you have signed up to speak. If you're not on this sheet and you do want to speak, no worries, we will, we will definitely get to you. The other ways to make a public comment that were on the screen, there is an email, there's a form out there. Don't feel like you only can do one or the other. If you speak here tonight and you get home and you realize you forgot something, you, you can send, send an email, go to the website. Also, this presentation is available currently on the NDOT website. If, you know, you went a little fast or you weren't able to read something, you can go and, and view it there as well. So with that, we're gonna start the public comment section. I, a couple of notes. One, we have a lot of people here that want to speak tonight and I'm sure many others that, whose names are not on here. We're not gonna run a timer on everybody, but to be respectful of everybody's time, we, we kindly ask that you keep your comments to around three minutes or so. Again, we're not gonna kick anybody out, but again, there's a lot of people that want to have their say. We want everybody to have their opportunity. Lastly, this is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. It's more an opportunity to make a comment for or against the project that can then get incorporated into the document. We will be around, the project team, everybody that raised their hands earlier that I went around and recognized, will be here for as long as you need us to be tonight to answer any questions on a one-on-one basis. So, again, try to refrain from asking direct questions that you expect an answer to, but we, we can chat afterward in that case. So, I'm gonna, I wanna call the first person here in a moment. That person can make their way up to the microphone. We're gonna ask everybody that makes a comment to state their name and their address. I'm probably gonna call up two at a time, just so we can kind of keep it flowing here a little bit. But with that, we will open the public comment section. And the first person on my list is Daniel Castillo. And then after that would be Clayton Song, possibly? Okay, Daniel, if you state your name and address, please. Thank you. Oh, should probably turn it on.
If you got a loud voice. Army training. Hi, good afternoon or good evening. Thank you for the honor and privilege of being here. I live at 9718 North 490 East Demont, which is in Rose Lawn. And I've been there about twenty-four, five years, some give or take. And I think the project is not bad. We get, we all know we need it, and we need to keep it simple. That, that bridge is old from my perspective. It needs to be four lanes wide and lights, you know? Keep it simple, you know? I think we don't need no islands zipping around, no turnarounds. I said, we, we all know we got too many trucks in that area. There's three truck stops there, and that's the main issue with the truckers. You know, not, not knocking them, but they're driving 53-foot trucks now, not the 48-footers anymore. So, I know there's some truckers out there somewhere in there or driven them like I have. They're not easy to drive a little circle. So, that's mainly it. I said, just keep it simple, put a new four-lane bridge up there, we're lights. That's it.
Daniel, thank you very much for being here tonight, I appreciate that. Clayton is next, and then after him is Larry Kristof. Larry, if you can make your way up here.
My name's Clayton Sons, live at 4309 East State Road 10 in Demont, in Rose Lawn area, next to the library. I don't disagree that something needs to be done at the intersection. Twenty-five years old, this is coming from a first-person perspective. I can't look out a window without seeing Route 10. I see what goes down that highway every single day. I'm a truck driver in the daytime and I'm an active member in agricultural society at night. Putting roundabouts in poses a big issue for both aspects. Viewing standpoint, the truck drivers, standard trucks can get through it, yes. When it comes to the work that I more so specialize in, oversized routes and whatnot of the nature, they're difficult. Too many, there's too many people that don't know how restricted we are in making our maneuvers through those intersections. We need far too much room to get through them. It's, it's, it poses an issue. It poses a bigger issue agriculturally. We have large farmland around here that transforms into large equipment. It comes past my house all the time. I love it. I mean, I'm part of it. For me to go through a roundabout, it's pain. I, I can't move more than a truck can, so it's just, it hinders me even more. I mean, I, I create too many pinch points. Another issue that I got with it, I understand there's nothing there now, but public safety, I think, kind of needs to be taken into effect from a truck driver's standpoint. If I can't park at the compass, I'm going to go over to the dreaded Flying Hook and I'm gonna go park there. I'm gonna walk across to go use the, the facilities over at the compass. I'm walking across that bridge. There's tons of people doing it now, travelers, truck drivers, et cetera. Even pedestrians that just live in the area, we cross that bridge a lot. We're getting by with it now, being an intersection that it is today. You add the confusion of a roundabout being a revolving door. When do you jump? You don't know where people are going. You're supposed to use turn signals in roundabouts to navigate your direction. Nobody does. I think that's something we really need to look at. Another thing is, I want to know that if we do this project anyways, this doesn't become an issue where like 109th, we implement one set of roundabouts and we just continue to keep doing it all the way down Route 10. It's a pain in the rear for us and, and regular people in cars. I mean, it's, it's terrible. Nobody wants to go through seven of them, and I think, I think that would end up happening multiple times with 55, et cetera, coming across. So, I think roundabouts are a good idea to go towards, but they're not the answer. Lights, I agree. I understand the ramps, you don't want traffic backing up on them. Time the lights, we, you can. I run construction work, I know it's, it's possible. And then the other side of it would be, I think half of your idea is 100% correct with doing a stoplight in front of the Loves and Flying J. That's, that's, it's hell for all of us, for lack of better words. That should be a part of this project, no matter what. Another thing I'd like to look at too is if we're gonna shut down the highway there, I mean, I understand we're still gonna have traffic. I want to know what the life expectancy of that bridge still is, because I don't want the traditional Indiana thing where we shut an intersection down and then we're shutting it down again next year, because, well, we gotta work on the bridge now. We're doing it, let's do this at once. It's cheaper to move the equipment in one time than it is multiple. So I think we need to at least try it with lights first. Let's pave the intersection, let's get a direction going, see what happens, see what the safety is, yada, yada, I get it. Think that's a better route for us to go. And the detour, I'd like to see the police presence happen. There's too many people on county line that are gonna get taken advantage of with semis going through there. They're gonna redirect, the neighborhood's gonna be impacted. There's too many kids over there. It's, it's just a poor idea. So I want police presence and I want reassurance that the local businesses and whatnot through there, they're not gonna struggle. I mean, we pretty much thrive off of I-65 being there, so. The other final point that I'd like to make is the, the amount of foreign people to the area, being from being from Alabama, Florida, anybody that travels north or south through our state. They're utilizing I-65. Traffic lights are ubiquitous across 50 states, not so much roundabouts. So for an individual who's not familiar with them, pulling in them, especially semis. You pull into them, you're not used to it, you don't know, what do you do? It's a problem. So appreciate your time.
Thank you, Clayton. Appreciate that. Thank you for being here tonight. Larry's up next and on deck after that is Dave DeRocque. DeCook, sorry. I'm doing my best with names, folks. If I butcher it, my apologies. Dave, if you can make your way up here, that would be awesome. Thank you.
My name is Laurie Kristoff. I live on 1100 West, the east side of I-65. I got to agree with everything he said. He took my comments. I really think stoplights at the top of both ramps is the way to go, if they're timed right. They're not timed right, it's a disaster. Other comment, I've lived on 1100 West for 47 years. We already have truck traffic coming up our road when there's a disaster on the highway. They come up our road and anybody that's familiar with Thayer Road going over I-65 knows at 1100 North where it makes that curve to the top of the hill is a disaster if you get a 53 foot truck up there. And that's going to happen both ways, coming from the east and coming from the west. Trucks are going to go up County Line Road, go over Thayer Road Bridge because their GPS tells them that's the shortest way to go. Not the right way to go, not following the detours, but they do that and it causes a mess. We get guardrails that are run over. Kids that are in danger because it is through neighborhoods. So I agree with stoplights at the top. And got to do something about keeping the, the detours active where they're going the way they're supposed to, instead of through residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you for being here tonight. Dave's up next and after him is John Kingma. John, if you can make, he's not here. Okay, we'll move on to Mary Kipers. Mary, are you here? Okay, if you can make your way up to the front, that'd be awesome. Thank you, sir.
I'm Dave DeCook from Demont, Indiana. Lived here all my life and seen how this whole area has grown from one truck stop to two truck stops to three truck stops. We have our own trucking business, we haul our own stuff. And we're going through there, either going through back and forth Route 10, or we're getting off trying to make a left-hand turn from southbound 65 to eastbound Route 10. And my biggest thing is I agree with all what's been said already. So I'm not going to regurgitate all that, but my biggest thing is with a truck, you have to have a break in traffic to safely pull out. And when we're 80,000 pounds and you've got a 280 inch long tractor with a 53 foot trailer, it takes a while to get out on the road. And it just, you, my main concern is where is that break in traffic going to come from? Because the roundabouts, it's going to slow, in my mind, slow everybody up. And it's just going to be one after another. So that is my thing. I, anybody that's lived here all their life, when Route 2, before there was signals in four lanes, it was a wild, wild west up there. It was, you just pulled out at your own risk, you went east or west on two at your own risk. It's the same thing what's happening down here. When they put, when they did it right and put the four lane in, put the stoplights in where, okay, you have to stop and there's a stop in the flow of traffic, you can then proceed on your route. It's fair to everybody. And I just think too, okay, the question was raised by a couple guys here. The bridge, when the three lane comes through, if it comes through, hopefully comes through, is that bridge going to need to be redone anyway? So if that bridge needs to be redone, I don't know the answer to that. That's not been brought up. But, okay, let's do it right in the first place. Get the four or five lanes, whatever you need, and just do it with, with stoplights. It's worked great up at Route 2. Yeah, you're gonna get stopped, but it's better than trucks pulling out and, you know, there's been a lot of crashes there and it's, it's just a safer deal to me. So that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you very much. Mary? And then after Mary is Pastor Randy Gann. You can probably stay where you're at.
Coopers, I live on 980 North to South at Demont. Actually, talking to a couple of folks involved with the project, most of my concern is actually going to have to be probably taken up with the Indiana State Police and local law enforcement. But I definitely believe these roundabouts, if that's the way we're going to go, are going to have to be big enough to accommodate combines and the big tractors that we have down here. Even though the powers that be seem to be hell-bent on destroying our agricultural heritage. We still need to be accommodating that kind of traffic. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Pastor Randy Gann, and then after him is Veronica Joel. Veronica?
Well, my name's Pastor Randy Gann. I'm the pastor over at Par Church New Beginnings over in Par, Indiana. Live at 9746 North, 490 East, Demont, which is Valley Forge subdivision. I've been here for 69 of my 70 years. God bless America. We are not England. We are not the Middle East. We do not need turnabouts. We live in the country. We go on north, south, east and west. We need stoplights and we don't need turnabouts. My suggestion is if we, if we do go along with this project, that you guys include three things. Police department sitting there, a wrecker company sitting there, and an ambulance service sitting there. But you're going to need all three of them if you guys go through with this project. My suggestion is put a stoplight by the two truck stops on the east side of I-65 at the entrance exit. Time that out. Put one on the southbound I-65. Put one over by Compass. Take the one away from County Line. And if you have to, to continue to break up traffic, put a stoplight down by Bozeman's Gas Station and you can time out all these stoplights. And I'm sure that it would cost less than $7 million to do that. This is a very hazardous area because I was talking to one of the gentlemen back there and he said that this is a piecemeal project. That there is more planned than just the turnabouts. But the, if you do just the turnabouts first, going to cause great congestion and havoc over by the compass, because you're going to be shoving all those people off at the same time without anything to, to address the stoppage of that area. Right now there are people, I was over there tonight coming home from Marriville on the southbound ramp, there's plenty of room to make two lanes. You won't have as wide as Apron as you have right now, but they use two lanes now anyways. They do it illegally, but even our state police even use it. Make that two lanes, so you can turn right off there if you're going towards Valley Forge, turn left. Put the stoplights in there, time them out. When you time them out, give enough time for two semis to get out of parking areas, to get on the highway. And to me, the simplest, most economical way to handle this is through stoplights.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here tonight. Veronica's up next and after is Rick Farias.
I'm Veronica Zoll. I live in the Rose Lawn area. Wanted to say, I was looking at the roundabouts, the problem with them is, one thing that wasn't mentioned, everybody's mentioning the trucks. We have the law in this state that just got added in last year that semis have the right-of-way through the roundabouts, no matter what, even if they're not yet in the roundabout. With it, if they're within 10 feet of the roundabout, they have the right-of-way. You could have control of the roundabout being in the roundabout and you get T-boned by that semi? You're at fault, not them. So that's one issue that we have to worry about with the roundabouts. The thing I was thinking as a result was that one of the options, the alternatives that was never even thought of, that disappoints me, was the intersection known as a diverging diamond. What would have happened is the traffic going eastbound would cross over into the north lane and then back into the south lane, so that from those lanes, right turns and left turns coming off of the on-ramps would be able to freely flow in with the traffic traveling down Route 10. So there's, there's that issue. Somebody brought up the issue of the bridge needing to be redone. That's a possibility. When I talked to someone beforehand as to why they did not consider the diverging diamond, they said that the bridge was going to need to be rebuilt. Well, again, people are mentioning the bridge possibly needing to be rebuilt. Well, then let's build it right. You know, it's as, as a little phrase I like to always say, is doing it right the first time means getting the job done, doing it wrong 14 times means job security. So, thank you.
Thank you. Rick Farias, Rick, okay. And then after Rick is Monica Regir. Monica?
Hello, I'm Rick Farious with Compass Travel Center. First of all, I thought when I signed up, it would be more about asking questions. So my only comments are that I would prefer that it's best, whatever's best for the community, and that's what we want. And then whatever's the quickest time, because we do have 120 people that are from the community that work for us. And we want to make sure that they are going to still have jobs and that we can employ everyone and even maybe employ more people. But if we reduce by nine months, that's going to cost us to have to reduce labor and we don't want to do that. So. I have questions later for the other people, but thank you.
Yeah, Rick, absolutely. See me afterward and we can get some questions answered for you. Okay. Monica is next. And then the last person I have on my list is, no, I'm sorry, there are two more. Mary Kay Larson.
Good evening. My name is Monica Regir and I've lived here in Jasper County for the last five years. I'm here tonight because this isn't just about a road design, it's about transparency, safety, and whether this project actually serves the people who live here. Sorry, I had a whole written statement, but a lot of people already addressed what I'd said. For me, groundwater wells and drainage are non-negotiables for this community. I would like to know what hydrology study specifically was used to determine the impact on water flow and well safety. I'm asking for the complete study, not the slide deck version. Has there been any soil stability modeling or erosion analysis tied to the increased pavement? If so, where is it? Where can residents access every document used in the decision-making process? Not just summaries, but the actual internal reports, environmental assessments, traffic models, and contractor evaluations. Finally, the elephant in the room. Is this redesign tied to the anticipated future commercial, industrial, or data center development at this interchange? Because if this project is being built for future development rather than current community needs, that needs to be stated plainly and transparently. NIPSCO isn't just doing routine upgrades in this corridor. They're planning new gas turbine capacity, high-output natural gas to replace the retired coal plants and those turbines aren't little neighborhood appliances. They require huge transmission upgrades, heavy equipment access, constant fuel delivery, and infrastructure that always shows up in the road design long before the public ever hears of the energy projects. These decisions shape our safety, our property values, our water, and our daily lives. We're not here to fight NDOT. We're here to make sure the process is transparent and the design truly serves the people who live here, not unseen future stakeholders. If this redesign is really about supporting the incoming turbine infrastructure and the industrial load that follows, we want that stated clearly, not implied, not hidden in technical filings, stated on the record. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. And I think Pretty, who was in the presentation, handled a lot of the environmental, she's still here, I believe. She can probably answer some of your questions regarding, yes, absolutely. Mary Kay Larson.
200 East and 10. Have they ever discussed prevent access of the trucks into downtown Crest Bridge, but have them diverted to down 55 South and get back on tollway at, by Fair Oaks? You know, it's, it's, there's not a lot of traffic there. I know there's agriculture, but a lot less traffic, a lot of less people and homes and congestion that could maybe, or have them go continue and have to stay on 41 going south and then cross over at a later time to get back on 65. 41 is a beautiful road. The further as you get outside of Newton County, you know, it's, is it at four, four lane? It's, it seems like there's more truck traffic, but I agree with the speakers here, we do need at least stoplights and maybe stoplights first before going later expense. And roundabouts, just people I've talked to, they do not sound safe with the truck. And, and, and this new, that, you know, we don't have the right-of-way, you know, actually you usually think cars have more, you know, rights than trucks at, at some point. So now knowing that trucks in this little, they have to be bigger than I think the civil, you know, the designers, the architects think. I think when you're actually out there, especially during traffic.
Thank you for that. Thank you for being here. The last person on my list, and again, then we'll open it up to the room, is State Senator Rick Niemeyer.
Thank you, Adam. Thank all you for showing up here tonight. For the last two years, we've been having conversations about the I-65 and 10 area because everybody knows what a dangerous area that was. So this has been ongoing. And I want to thank NDOT for coming up tonight and doing this public hearing. I'm here tonight to listen to what you have to say and your concerns and take them back to NDOT and have them address what we've talked about, what you've talked about tonight. I don't know if this is the answer to the roundabout. I've been involved in a few of these and I've been on the opposite side of most of them. And it seems like a lot of the public hearing that is, is on roundabouts, especially in high-density areas, is mostly negative. And when, but these projects are engineered out and they feel like they're the best, you know, thing for that intersection. But I haven't been to a lot of them where there's been any lot of positive talk about doing them because of the danger and stuff they might cause and, and, and the insecurity. Roundabouts are a great piece of, they work a lot, you know that. They have a bunch of them around and they work in certain areas. But this is, this is a tough area here. So I'm here tonight to listen to what you have to say. It's not been, we haven't been talking about this intersection for the last couple of years. So I'll have more comments on it when you get all your comments in and I look at them, I have a meeting with NDOT and, and go forward with it. But I, I think before the decision is made, which is going to be fairly quick, it looks like, I might call another meeting of my own and maybe with Representative Ailsworth to tell you maybe where the decision is at and why they decided to go this route, because this is the public hearing part of it. And now you have your comment period. Now it's kind of over at this point. They're going to list on what you have to say, but this is a good process, but by mean, no means is it over yet. So we'll see what happens that goes forward. I want to again, thank NDOT for coming out and my friend Mike Ailsworth for being here tonight. Thanks, Mike.
Senator Niemeyer, thank you for being here tonight and for your leadership. So with that, again, that was the end of the sign and sheet, but I'm going to open it up to the floor to anybody else that would like to make a comment. So if you would, if you can make your way up to the mic and if there's anybody in addition to those gentlemen who would like to speak, if you can maybe kind of make your way over to this area, that would be amazing. And again, if we can state our name and record for the, our name and address for the record. Thank you.
David Herriman, located just a couple miles east of where the intersection is here on 65. Going through there, I've lived here my whole life and going through the intersection multiple, multiple times a week. See what happens there. I'm a little disappointed in the state of Indiana that we're here tonight. Should have been here before. There's been many accidents in that area. I would dare to guess that there's been just as many accidents at the truck stops many times as I've gone through there where those entrances are versus even where the on and off ramps are. So I think that has to be addressed as well. I would agree with your comments that have been made. as far as the roundabouts aren't the answer. Um, you speak to senior citizens. They, they hate them. Their minds aren't as sharp as what they are when they're younger. I'm starting to get to that age. I go through a strange roundabout, you've got to be thinking that things come around so quick. And this one has a whole lot more truck traffic than a lot of them that I go through now. And that's even going to make the situation a whole lot worse than it is. Let's fix the situation, do it right the first time. You know there's more stuff coming in down here. There's going to be more and more traffic, whether it be trucks, whether it be trailers. We've got an RV parked there now. Um, this is definitely a busy intersection. Do it with the lights, put plenty of lanes in. Too much space does not hurt anything. Put extra lanes in. Uh, most of the times when congestion happens is because you do not have the space. You can't put the turning lanes in and stuff they need. Um, so to me, that would be the way to go spend the money. How many lives is worth the extra? If it costs an extra million dollars, how many lives do we have to lose? When they did this, we said years ago, and I talked to some law enforcement officials, how come they didn't fix this right away? They said, well, they go through studies, we got to have X amount of accidents or so many lives has to be lost before we do it right. Let's do it right the first time. Forget the roundabouts. You don't need them. Look at what they're doing up here at State Road 10. It's working fine.
Thank you, sir. Again, if you could say your name and address.
My name's Amanda Gallagher. I live in Wheatfield. Um, don't live over there, but I do drive a school bus and taking a school bus through there has been very dangerous for us in the past. We've had a lot of close calls. And what I don't see on the plans is um, anything there by Loves. That's our biggest spot where people pull out because there's not a break in traffic. So it would be nice if they're there to protect the children.
Doing a briefly address that. We are developing, for what it's worth, an, an additional project to kind of clean up the area over there by the, it's not part of this project necessarily, but we are working on something. So, yes.
Good evening. My name's Troy Whitehead. I'm 5524 Birdie Drive over on Sandy Pines. Um, a couple of things as I'm listening to every, everybody speak. I'm thinking about the growth projection for this area for the next 10, 15, 20 years. The amount of houses being built, subdivisions and the like, and is a roundabout the right option? You know, with traffic patterns increasing, more and more people getting off of 65 at 10, is a roundabout going to be able to, it may be able to handle it now. I don't know. That's the question I have. What's the traffic patterns and the like? What's it going to do 10 years from now? If we build three more subdivisions and five more subdivisions and the like, is this enough? Or are we going to end up doing it again? Because now we've got a lot more cars, a lot more trucks, and a lot more going on. Is there something similar? Yeah, where I, again, I'm assuming there's been traffic pattern studies with the amount of trucks that go through versus cars. I've never seen a roundabout with the amount of semis I see at that exit. So I'd like to see an example of where a roundabout's been used in a similar situation and does it work? Because I've never seen it. I heard a couple of really smart people say State Road 10, that example up uh, at the Lowell exit, to me makes a lot of sense because it's logical. Uh, and there's enough space there with the additional lanes that if there is more traffic down the road, it'll handle it. Um, the other thing I, I think about is I, on the preferred option, you took away the, the uh, Loves and the, the um, other truck stops, um, stoplights and the right turns. I think that's a non-starter because you're only addressing part of the problem. A lot of the accidents and a lot of the risk are trucks and cars going, if they were coming out of the roundabout going east on 10, you're not addressing trucks coming out of the truck stops. And regardless of if a roundabout's the way it's done, I, I don't know. I'm not smart enough and I'm an engineer. But if you don't address coming out of the truck stops, you may address the exit ramps and the entrance ramps, but then you have the accidents for the trucks coming out of the truck stop. So I think we've got to look at down the road, what's best, because there's going to be a lot of growth in this area. We know it. We're seeing it. Um, you're going to have more traffic coming out of Chicago, coming up to Chicago, more trucks and the like. And I'd like to see an example of where a roundabout in this scenario with these traffic patterns and the growth potential is the right option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you don't mind restating your name and address.
Two more things I'd like to add.
For our reporter, can you just re, I know you said it once, will you restate your name?
Oh, Clayton Sons, uh, 4309 East State Road 10. Um, two things I'd like to address. One that I'd really like you guys take uh, into effect is the standpoint, I guess that would probably make most sense for you guys is I want to ask, I want you guys to ask your employees, what do they feel safer in navigating when they're doing snow removal? An intersection this big, it, it, again, a revolving door, it's like walking into a Portillo's. When? How do I, I, it's easier to stop at a light. And I think again, I mean, my, my biggest vice is, is the pedestrians that happen through there. Um, I'd like to thank you for providing nice facilities for drivers and, and travelers to use. Uh, love your truck stop. Um, but us trying to constantly get over there, that's, I think, something we really need to take into consideration. So as far as that goes, I want to see a future proposed plan for that. And uh, I do agree with your half idea there. Um, on the stoplight being implemented in front of the Loves and the Flying J, I don't agree with the yield sign being placed there. I would like to propose the idea that instead of something happening there with the yield sign, we stop that traffic and direct everything out one direction. So then now they have to go to a light, the yield signs, everybody's just going to jump. So I think, I think you're on the right path, but if we're going to do something at this intersection, let's do this all at once.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Also, if you don't mind restating your name and address.
I'm still Pastor Randy Gann from Power Church New Beginnings. 9746 North, 490 East, Demott, Indiana, Valley Forge. Couple of things I forgot to bring up is we're thinking about I-65 and the overpasses. But Route 10 is a trucking route. Uh, when I grew up here and we always heard the excuse of they use it because of the scales up at Route 10. They're trying to go around them. Well, they've closed the scale at Route, uh, Route 2. But if you go down Route 10 in the afternoon, uh, every Sunday afternoon, me, my wife, my mom, we go out to 10 and 55. We eat lunch after church. Semi after semi after semi going across 10 and 55. We haven't even talked about that. That's the extra traffic on Route 10. And so we need to consider that when we're talking about all this. And I don't know how you guys came about that this is the best way. Uh, I've never seen any crews out just sitting out watching the traffic. To see traffic flow, to see the time and, and the highest traffic. I've never seen any of it. I know you got back roads that run across the, the road, but that doesn't tell you about the near misses. You guys need to sit out there at the truck stops, at the interchange, out at 10 and 55, because there's a four-way stop sign there. Think it's a four-way let's cruise through sign. And uh, so that needs to be addressed too. Uh, the other concern I have, and I discussed with the young man back there, was when you come off, well, if you're coming off 65 and you're going west, if there's trucks going into the compass, which I am very thankful that compass is here because it does employ a lot of people. And, but when those trucks are trying to get off the road, we, the citizens of our community, are using the right hand to go around everybody. Tonight, I waited for two semis to turn into the compass. I had five vehicles, one a semi, passing me on the right-hand shoulder. That's not a street. That's a turn lane to go into the businesses. That needs to be addressed. And that's what they're talking about with widening the roads and extra lanes and all that. I know you can't hardly do it because of how short the driveways are going into the businesses. That was a lack of foresight, but it needs to be addressed because they need to be able to have their companies. The people on the north side need to be able to have their companies and we, the citizens, should follow the law. If a truck is trying to stop and turn, stop and wait for him to turn. Don't go buzzing around. Your house will be there 10 minutes later. Just everybody down a little bit. We don't need to rush all over the place. We need to help out their decision-making by us doing the, the laws of the road properly.
Thank you, sir. I made one last call for public comment. If anybody would like to do it, that would be the time. I, I do need you to come to the mic. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Discussion about a frontage road of sorts, and I know other communities have them, even well into Chicago. No, the frontage roads, they would have to come south, from the south, because north, I, I don't think there is um, land available. But somehow build that frontage road. I don't know how far it would go south. It might go all the way to Fair Oaks. I know it doesn't sound um, unrealistic, but it might be safety. And it would, uh, the truck drivers might actually appreciate that instead of that risky location of turning and fighting with traffic, especially I think when you come from the south going of at 10, when you're coming up from the south to 10, either way, especially going left. I mean, they have to wait forever. I've seen, seen the guys and you're afraid that they're going to go because, so anyways, frontage road seemed reasonable, but I don't know what the expenses would be.
Oh, yes. All right. Thank you. All right. One last call. Public comment, going once, twice. Thank you again for being here tonight. Genuinely appreciate. We, this is a great turnout. We appreciate everybody. Everybody's schedules are busy. We know that. We thank you for being here. Again, the project team is here to answer any, answer any individual questions you might have. We'll be here for as long as you need us. But thank you again and drive home safe.